I'd like to welcome you to the Murfreesboro City School Board meeting this evening on May 12th, sorry. And we'd like to have a call to order. And the, I'm going to immediately go to Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you. Yes, at this time, I'd like to introduce Shallow Segal. Shallow is a teacher at Reese Rogers, and she recently was named as the shining star for Reed to Succeed. Shallow has been very involved in the young children's organization at MTSU for Literacy, and has hosted the Jingle Jam, what's called the Jingle Jam, which is for children in our community and collects books. So at this time, I would like to ask Shallow Segal if she would please come and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And following that, I'd like to have a moment of silence, and if we could during that time, hold in memory our former superintendent Dana Swick, who recently passed away, and also to keep in our thoughts and our prayers, the people in the district who have lost, who have lost loved ones. So Shallow, if you would lead us in our pledge, and then we'll have a moment, Mrs. Hollins. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown and Ms. Phillips, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Sorry, Mr. King.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
I've been called worse.
All right, the agendas have been approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, thank you. Before we begin anything else, we need to have a discussion of Dr. Gilbert's contract extension, and I'll turn this over to Ms. Baker.
Okay, and the reason this has to be the first item on your agenda is based on the Tennessee state law requires discussion of renewal or of a director's contract to be discussed as the first item on the agenda. I have provided you with a copy of Dr. Gilbert's current contract, which runs through July 4th, I mean June 30th of 2016. And at the board's direction, I have drafted a contract that extends Dr. Gilbert's contract and services, the director of schools, through June 30th of 2019. It also included a 4% increase in her salary. And then there was a revision to the section where if Dr. Gilbert was going to speak at a lecture at a class, that she would not need to get prior approval from the board, but the board would authorize her to do that. So the contract extension is before the board for their consideration.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, a second.
Second.
Sorry.
Both of my friends here, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Renear, I feel like we are so fortunate to have Dr. Gilbert as our great leader of Murfreesboro City Schools. No one brings more passion, more knowledge, more professionalism than Dr. Gilbert, and I am proud that we have her and that we can offer her an extension on her contract.
Well, I thank you for that, but as I have expressed many times, this district is built on the backs of the teachers and the classified staff in this district. They are the folks who make a difference every day, and I'm just, it's my pleasure to be among them. They amaze me every single day with their work ethic and what they do for children. So I very much appreciate being among them.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Dr. Gilbert's contract extension. Will you call the roll, please, Ms. Price?
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Renear?
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, thank you. All right.
Thank you so much.
I think we can move on. Dr. Gilbert, do you want to go to the retirees?
Yes, I think so. Earlier this evening, we honored our retirees with a reception, and I want to say again how special they are, so many years of service to this, to this community and to this school district. And you really have built the foundation on which we all stand, and so thank you so much for your friendship, and I do consider many of you very close friends and colleagues, and it's just a real pleasure to have worked with you, and I hope that you continue to come and see us and visit us and help us with the children, because your knowledge is just unsurpassed, and the, kind of as the mayor said earlier, what you know about this school district is so vital. So at this time, I would, I'm going to call all the retirees, not only the ones who are here, but the ones who are not here, and as I call your name, if you would please stand, I would appreciate it. First, we have Diane Bowen, who is an education assistant at Hobgood, Marilyn Burnworth, who is a bookkeeper at Irma Segal, Phyllis Carr, who is a cafeteria manager at Mitchell Nelson, and if you go ahead and keep standing, I know you don't want to do that, but we want to see, because you've been standing a long time, and I think one more time, we would ask that you stand, thank you. Linda Clark, who's the principal at Discovery, Peggy Courier, a teacher at Mitchell Nelson, Patty Dodd, a librarian at Irma Segal, Mary Francis, a teacher at John Pittard, Mickey Hastings, a teacher at John Pittard, Lana Hurt, teacher at Mercury Heights in our preschool, Marcia Jones, teacher at Hobgood, Karen Lamb, the assistant principal at Mitchell Nelson, Diana Lowe, cafeteria manager at Mitchell Nelson, Emma Lidle in the cafeteria at Discovery, Alma McKnight, a teacher at Irma Segal, Maggie Meredith, cafeteria at Discovery, Walter Owens, who works in maintenance, Marilyn Patterson, who is a midday assistant at Mitchell Nelson, Melanie Richardson, a teacher at Reese Rogers, Karen Whitaker, a teacher at Casey Lane, Naomi Yuri, works in cafeteria at Mitchell Nelson, and Susan Zumbro, who is a teacher at Hobgood. Would you please join me in thanking them for their service? Board?
May I say something? Don't run away yet.
Said like a teacher.
I know many of these people, I've either worked with them personally, or have been involved with them in some other capacity, like cheerleader, parent, or whatever, I've known them for a very long time, and when I think of the knowledge that they've imparted over these years, it's just kind of amazing, or the number of meals the ladies in the cafeteria fix, it's just incredible. I just, you know, I'm not a real mathematician, but I thought of this, we had 10 teachers who were retiring on this list. If each of them worked 30 years, and some of them have gone way beyond that, and each of them had a class of 20 children, that's 6,000 children these people have dealt with, or had their hands on, or loved those babies, or wiped those noses, or taught them multiplication facts, and I just have to commend you, you know, I was one of you, so I guess I know better than anybody else how fabulous you are. You will be missed, and I just, you're my heroes. Don't you cry, Miki, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Well said.
Yes.
Such sweet people. Dr. Gilbert, do you want to go on with the communication?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like, Shallow, if you would come back up, I think you're still here, yes. Would you come, please, and talk about the Jingle Jam? I think the public would be interested in hearing that. Not only did Shallow receive the shining star award from Reed to Succeed, but Black Fox was named the school of the year. They had a tremendous night last year where the whole community came in and Reed to Succeed worked with Reed, but would you talk a little bit about Jingle Jam, because it's something that we had last year at Discovery School, and I assume that we will be having it again this year, right?
I certainly will, so. Essentially, at MTSU, there is a small group of preeducators who have collaborated to make this group called Raiders for Young Children. Typically, before I was there, we were gaining a lot of professional development, but we decided we needed an outreach program. So as a group, we decided on Reed to Succeed, and basically what we did is we sent out flyers and we invited children, we provided refreshments, we had a band, and we had a book for every child to go home with. We flooded Reed to Succeed with books, and so last year, they partnered with us, and they helped us to provide books for every child who attended, and many children even brought home five books. So it's become a tradition now, it was two years in a row, and I hope that the MTSU Raiders for Young Children will continue it, because it's been very successful.
Thank you, thank you so much for sharing that, because I think it's just another example of a great partnership. Fortunately, two years ago, when I attended it, she was there, and I thought, hmm, I need to talk to her. And so to my surprise, I was delighted to sign her contract then, about a year and a half later, so it's a real pleasure to have her on board as a teacher now in our district. Gary Anderson has been doing some trash talking the last few weeks, and that's literally what he has called it. And so tonight, we have our awards ceremony here at the board meeting, so I'm going to let Gary talk about this. And to say that the principals have become competitive on email is probably an understatement. So, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert, for that wonderful introduction. Board, good evening. Yes, we've been doing some trash talking around the district, and just as a special gift for you, you'll see a little green container on your desk, and that is a pencil holder, and if you'll see on the front, the slogan, it has our logo, Murfreesboro City Schools, and it says, "Don't Trash Our Future, Recycle." Inside is a little sticker that says, "I recycle," which I have one on here, and we just wanted to give you, get you in the flavor of what we're doing tonight. We have two special guests with us tonight from Rutherford County Recycling, it's Mimi Kiesling is here, she's the environmental educating coordinator, she's sitting right here behind me, and Mac Nolan, who is the solid waste director for Rutherford County, and they've been very instrumental in helping us put this program together. Our goal was to embark on trying to get our schools to recycle 50% of our trash. That is what the national norms say, it can be recycled in schools, and so we are, our goal is to shoot for that. As Kermit the Frog once said, "It's not easy being green." So we are struggling to make sure that we make green a very special thing in Murfreesboro City Schools. Our initial goal was 25%, so we started this journey a while back, and we're trying to get as high as we can towards that 50. Well, we're here tonight to present the trophy for the winner of the first recycling contest, and as you see, it's a beautiful green recycling dumpster. It's all nicely laid out here, so the crowd here, nice recycling dumpster here, beautiful. We did many long hours of searching for this, and we've got it here now to pass around. The winner will get this to keep at their school for the year until next year's championship, and then they'll have to bring it back, and if they win, they get to keep it, if they don't win, they got to give up the dumpster, and it's got to go somewhere else. We think it's ugly enough to be pretty, so we're, and we think they'll want to display it that way, so that was kind of our intent. Well, our district average right now is 29.7% by volume, that volume meaning how much, how full are the dumpsters as compared to the, to the recycle, to the non-recyclable trash. And we're here tonight to talk about the champion, but before I get and announce the champion, I wanted to tell you that this really is a team effort. It's the students who get engaged with this, it's the teachers, it's the staff, it's the extended school program, it's the custodial service, it's everyone in the district that makes up the school's recycling team, and especially some students that go around and help collect all this, including the food service department and the custodial service. So the contest was based on the volumes recycled versus the trash, what we call true trash, and other factors involved, was the recycling dumpster locked? Because if someone doesn't have it locked, someone dumps some other trash, and we lose the entire value of the recycled trash if someone contaminates it. So that was one of the factors. Were the boxes broken down, so they don't inflate the volume by having boxes not broken down? Was there any contamination in the recycling dumpster? Were there any recycling materials in the true trash? And did the school do anything creative to promote recycling in their school? Well, these conditions gave us two distinct clear winners. One is the recycling champion of, based on volume, and then we had to come up with another award, because one school got so creative, they made a music video about recycling. Now, I can't show this on TV, because it was a song that's real popular, and I'm not sure we have the right rights to do that on TV tonight, but just believe me, it was an awesome song, the kids performed, and it was just really good. So the winner of the recycling most creative event was Hobgood Elementary School, and their whole thing is, "Don't trash our future, let's keep it, keep it good, keep it clean." So congratulations to Dr. Garrett and Hobgood on that special honor, and their, their school recycling team will all be receiving one of the little mini dumpsters for the kids to take home, which can either be used, I think you said it was for a Barbie, a Barbie-sized dumpster, trashing, it's for the recycling, it's got its own little wheels to move around, but it's really a pencil holder, is what it's designed for. Now, the presentation of the winning recycling team, they increased from the first semester to the second semester, 21.9% increase in the trash they recycled. So the championship this year, with Murfreesboro City Schools Recycling Champions, it says, recycle, reduce, reuse, the winner is for 2014-15, Northfield Elementary School. We have a representative from Northfield to come up front and receive your prestigious award to take back to your school. Come on, it says, "Keep calm and lead on, you're doing a great job, way to go, and you get the dumpster award, how about that? Dr. Lloyd, would you like to make a speech, or have the students make a speech about how wonderful this is? Well, well, here you go, he would like you to say something about your recycling, if you've got him, could you like to say something really nice about how wonderful your school is, how great your principal is, what a great teacher you have?
I think our school is very neat.
I've been at Northfield for six years, and I know that it's a very good school, we take very good care of all of our students, and that we know that recycling is important, and we have an amazing principal, and that we are very happy to help out and recycle, and that we love Northfield, and we're always going to represent it, so keep calm and lead on.
We take recycling at our school very seriously, because we want our planet to be clean.
Excellent, excellent. This is your first TV time, isn't it? Did you enjoy it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's it, the, the keep calm and lead on group has been here, and told us, so ladies and gentlemen, if you would come get your trophy to take back to your school, it needs to be displayed very proudly, and let everyone know how great Northfield Elementary Schools in recycling, but 45.7% recycling, folks, that is awesome. I'd like to ask if, if Mimi or Mac, if you'd like to say a few words about the recycling and about Rutherford County, what we're doing here, and remember, guys, don't trash our future, recycle, okay? Okay, thank you. Mac Nolan?
Thank you. These children represent our future, and our future can be bleak, or it can be very bright, depending on how we treat it. So we've got to look forward to the, to the future and try to do the right things with the environment, and it starts right here with these children. Thank you for letting, letting us help do this.
And I will be delivering some T-shirts to the kids that are on the team this week, so I will be, I need to get your sizes from your principal, I'll be delivering T-shirts to you, okay?
Thank you.
Very good. I am the environmental education coordinator for the county. I typically see between 10 and 1,000, 10 and 12,000 kids per year in our school systems, teaching them about recycling and the importance of it. We have a long ways to go before we reach all of our goals, but they are part of our future, so we're very happy to be here tonight, and we're very proud of the job that they did on this competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac and Mimi. And students, you're also going to get one of the pencil holders for you to have on your desk, either at home or at school, let's see, it rolls and everything, it's really cool. If you have a Barbie playset, it might work for that, too, as Kelly has told me. But thank you, Board, very much for indulging us in this moment of recycling and talking trash.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, I think you being our numbers guy, you're the only person I can imagine who would figure out that these children have 45.7% recycling, just amazing to me, fantastic. Northfield, thank you so much, you did such a great job. Okay. All right, next we go to our consent agenda, consent items. Do we have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is there any discussion? All right.
Ms. Renear, I'm sorry, on that, on the board schedule calendar, should we go ahead and, we keep, there's that November 24th date.
Okay.
In the past few years, we have changed that meeting date.
You're right.
So, that's just something to consider, I mean.
Well, shall we make a change right now before we approve it?
So do you want to, we're just going to remove that date, correct?
Dr. Gilbert, what's your preference?
I think, Kelly, let me ask you this, if we decide that we need to have a meeting, an extra meeting, like on that, we would have one the second week anyway, I think we'd be fine without it, unless there would be something that would come up, and then if there, there were, we would know about it, surely.
Before end.
Right.
Okay. All right, so can, Dr. Brown, you made the motion, can you amend it?
My thought would be just to leave it on there, and then cancel it later, because it's a lot easier to say that we're not having a meeting than it is to, wouldn't we have to announce that we're having an additional meeting? So that's why I thought it would be better just to leave it there, and if we realize that we don't have enough business to conduct that night, then cancel it later.
That's good. All right, shall we go with the original motion, then, to approve the calendar as it's written? We each have a copy. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have our 2015-16 school board calendar, meeting dates. Anything else that we need to discuss there under the consent items? I guess that vote should have taken place for all of them, is that correct? Sorry, so we've approved our consent items. Action item, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, we are required to have a differentiated pay plan, and we are wanting to present the same plan that we presented last year. According to the differentiated pay plan, we can offer a signing bonus to attract teachers in areas where we feel like there's a shortage of qualified teachers, for example, ESL, behavior modification or comprehensive development. For 2015, we paid a $2,000 signing bonus for new ESL teachers, and we are proposing to do the same thing this year with teachers who are hired to the system, and also teachers who decide to transfer to the position of an ESL teacher, that they receive a $2,000 signing bonus, and this would satisfy the state requirement for the differentiated pay plan. So we do need motion, and need to get that approved.
All right. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any more discussion?
I have some.
Yes, Ms. Phillips?
Um, Dr. Gilbert, are there other positions that are difficult to fill?
Right now, the ESL position probably are the greatest, especially it can be, but at this time, we're not seeing difficulty with that, like we might expect. Partly, too, we're looking at what teachers we perceive that we're going to need over the next several years, and certainly ESL is an area, and that's the most critical need that we have right now, so that's the reason we're comfortable with presenting that.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
Is it difficult, just the lack of ESL teachers, or just?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And you have to look at the increase in Tennessee, I mean, Tennessee is a state that we're seeing in ESL increase, and we're no exception to that.
In our numbers, we just went through that with the budget, so.
Right.
Any more discussion? All right, those in favor of the differentiated pay plan for 2015-16 signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Reports and information?
Okay, I am bringing to you tonight a report on some of the legislation that was passed during this last general assembly session. I know you've probably heard them discussed in the news, the law regard, that they refer to as guns in parks. It does impact schools, and I wanted to just bring the board up to date, now that that bill has been passed and signed by the governor. It is public chapter 250, and it amends two sections of the state law. It amends the section 39171311 that deals with weapons in, on park property, and it also amends the section of the law that deals with weapons on school property, which is found at 3917, I believe, 1310, and it amended both of those sections. The biggest change that they made to the law is that now, if someone has a valid carry permit, handguns are permitted on specific park property. The law specifically allowed, as an exception to the weapons ban, individuals with valid handgun carry permits to carry their handgun on public parks, natural areas, historic parks, nature trails, campgrounds, forest, greenways, waterways, or other similar public places. Now, one point to keep in mind is that the law still prohibits weapons on park property that would include public parks, playgrounds, civic centers, or building facilities, areas of property owned or used or operated by a municipal, county, or state government for recreational purposes. And those weapons encompass explosives, explosive weapons, a device primarily designed or made or adapted for delivering or shooting an explosive weapon, a machine gun, a short barrel rifle or shotgun, a firearm silencer, a hoax device, knuckles, or any other implement for the infliction of serious bodily injury or death that has no common lawful purpose. So all of those weapons are still prohibited on park property. So the handgun is an exception that they added in there, and if you'll note, they did not add that exception to encompass inside park buildings, it's only those open areas that are referenced initially, the natural areas, the historic parks, nature trails, campgrounds, forests, greenways, waterways, those type of open park areas. And by inserting the handgun exception into the law, they also had a caveat on that exception. The handguns are not authorized in the immediate vicinity of a school-related activity, and that encompasses not just elementary, middle, and high schools, it encompasses university... It encompasses university or college programs, or any educational institution's use of park property. So handguns are not allowed in the immediate vicinity of an educational institution, including our schools, using park property. So that was the change they made to the statute that dealt with parks. They also made changes to the statute that deals with weapons on school property. And the change that they made to that law is a little bit, they inserted the words, before it read that weapons were prohibited on property owned, operated, owned or operated by a board of education, or an educational institution. They did, now they've added in "or while in use by" a board of education. So that was meant, designed to encompass when, for example, park property is being used by a board of education. It also, and so they inserted the handgun exception, but still handguns are not allowed on school property that is owned or operated by a school, or property that is being used by a school. So that is, that is still a restriction in the school section. And if you bring weapons with the intent to go armed on school property, it is a Class E felony. And if they are on park property, generally, it would be a Class A misdemeanor. So it's, that, that's some of the changes they made in the law. There are still some verbiage in this new legislation that cities and school systems are seeking more clarification on. But I wanted to let you know, because I know it's a topic that's being discussed a lot, and what the steps that school systems and parks are taking at this point is to revise their signage. And school systems are, many school systems are discussing bringing portable sandwich board signs with them on field trips, and anytime they go into a park to use the park, that puts the handgun owner on notice that this area of the park is being utilized by a school. And so, that is, I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. I know I've been asked questions about whatever happened with that bill, because it did go through a lot of changes as it went through the legislature.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you for making us aware of the details with that. And I, I think I'd like us to follow the signage recommendations that Ms. Baker takes. You know, everyone isn't going to read those laws. So if we have some kind of signage, it would be most helpful.
Do you know if the Parks and Research Commission is planning on doing anything with signs?
Yes, they met this week, and as a matter of fact, I went to a staff training today on this law. They are going to be revising the signs. They will have some portable signs that can be checked out, just due to the volume of usage that takes place in parks. It may be beneficial for school systems to invest in some signs that can be carried with them when they go on field trips, because, especially if you're going outside of the city of Murfreesboro's park system, there's no guarantee other park property would have the available signage. So, but yes, they are revising their signage and are going to invest in some of the portable signs that can be used.
I would like to suggest that we take a look at this between now and the next board meeting, to see about getting the sandwich boards then, because if, if we're going to have field trips this summer with ESP, which I assume we will, I'd almost like to have them, so we can just have them on those buses. And wherever those, those buses go, we would have those signs.
The child bus, too?
Yeah. Mr. Anderson, any, thinking about transportation, would that be the best way maybe for us to approach that?
They would have to be secured on the buses, so they can't fly around. And we'll just have to see where the space could be. Maybe it'd be right behind the driver, or something like that is a possibility. I'll check with transportation.
Okay. If we could come back to you all with a proposal for that, and I'd like to do it at the next board meeting.
Dr. Brown?
Did the legislature give any clarification on their immediate vicinity?
That's a good question. And a lot of people have posed that question. Immediate vicinity, just a second. The best I could find in the way of any additional definition was found in Code Section 1301, 3917-1301, where it defined immediate vicinity refers to the area within the person's immediate control, within which the person has ready access to the ammunition. But see, that, that verbiage was in a code section dealing with where they secure their gun. So I don't think that definition is applicable to the intent of this statute. And I looked at the legislative history, and the immediate vicinity verbiage was added later on in the debate, because some people had a concern that the "while in use by schools" meant that if there was a school, say, using one park pavilion, and someone was way off on, you know, a long distance away on a hiking trail, that that meant they couldn't take their handgun on the hiking trail just because one pavilion was being used by a school. So they, they narrowed it to immediate vicinity. So that's something that is, you know, you have to use common sense and the general Webster's definitions to, to define what immediate vicinity would mean. And it's what you'd look to if they don't define it in the statute.
Ms. Phillips?
I had two or three quick questions. When you were explaining it to us, Ms. Baker, and by the way, thank you for bringing this follow-up to us, you differentiate it between green, greenway-type places and more recreation-type places, I think. Now, I, my understanding is that our children do a lot of science-type experiments near and on the greenway. Is that going to impact differently?
No. If, if a school group is on the greenway, no one can have a handgun within the immediate vicinity of where that school group is utilizing the greenway.
Okay.
That, that's the prohibition that is in here about having the handgun around a school activity.
So that, that just doesn't matter, just wherever, anytime there's a school activity, then that prohibits having, someone having a handgun in that vicinity?
Yes.
Okay. My last question is, and I'm sure it's not, there's no way a municipal law can override this? Can we? No?
No. That is, the, the prior language in the statute allowed municipalities, they gave municipalities the control to determine when and where guns, handguns could be brought into their park property. And the revision to this statute took that authority away from cities.
I see. I see.
And counties and the state.
Okay. Thank you.
I, too, echo that I'm so glad you're clarifying some of this for us. I just, in my mind, I can see that someone might be on the greenway, or someone might be at Barfield Park, and then a school group comes in after another person has already been there with a handgun carry permit. And I, I have a real hard time with this, Bill.
Well, the, and the obligation that the statute places on the handgun carry permit holder is that, once they have knowledge, or reasonably should have known, that a school group is using the park, the immediate vicinity of the park area where they're located, they have an obligation under the statute to remove themselves from the area, so in, in either go to another area of the park, or go place their handgun, secure it in their vehicle if they want to continue using the park while the school group is there. So that obligation is listed in the statute and is a responsibility that's placed on the handgun owner. But that's why the signage and the notification is so important, to make sure it takes place, because that obligation kicks in when the handgun owner knows or should have known that it was being utilized by a school group.
Well, I like the idea that you mentioned perhaps the Parks Department might have some of their own signage that could be used in days past, years past, when we would make reservations to be at a particular pavilion. They would just post a little sign saying, "This group, Mrs. Rainier's class is using this at 10 o'clock," or whatever. Perhaps there could be something along that line that could be posted on, you know, right on the pavilion, so that if anyone else was coming to the pavilion right next to it, they would realize that in 30 minutes, a school group is coming. So I think that might be beneficial. Yes, Ms. Phillips, sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine. One last thought is that I think we need to partner with our, the Daily News Journal and other media outlets to try to get that information out there and clarify, and, and an extra step to do all we can to protect our children. Get the, you know, ask them to publicize it and, and, you know, really explain it. Get the message out there to protect the kids.
Any other discussion? All right. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Any other business? Ms. Phillips?
I just want to take a moment and thank Ms. Trail and her team for creating such a nice event for our retirees today. I know they all appreciated it, and we did, too.
Okay. I also want, oh, sorry, Ms.
I just didn't know if you had an update on the TCAP results?
No.
Do you have any idea when they're going to come in?
We may get, we hope to get quick scores on Monday. Now, that won't be released to the public, of course, but that, that's what they're saying. I have no idea, you know.
So quick scores on Monday makes it likely that it will be reported on the report cards.
If we can get them Monday. If we get them later than that, we're going to have a problem. Because what's going to happen is the teachers are going to have to put those and figure them in, and then we're going to have to get, it'll take a couple of days to get those printed, and then we're out.
I'd like to recognize Madeline Skiles Harris from our city council. Good to see you this evening. Thank you for everyone, to everyone who's sat through our meeting this evening. If there's no other business to come before the board, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you.
Good job.